For all that you have done for us and we want you to know that we truly appreciate the efforts that you have put forward and your service. Thank you.
So these guys, great lights. So that was very nice, thank you. Someone clearly had one of my cell phone number because I don't know where all those pictures came from. That was very nice, thank you. So Dr. McGee, onto, well actually, would any school committee member wish to address anything made in the comment? Hearing no one on to recognitions and announcements, Dr. McGee, you want us to...
Would you please, Mr. Chairman, if we could really could stand in front of the lights, that would be really impressive, in front of the firing squad.
Well, I would put it out there.
You thought it was over? One can only...
So I would like to say a few words about three, our three outgoing members of the school committee. As superintendent, it's been an honor and a pleasure to work with the three of you. Your professionalism, your dedication, your commitment to the children in this district, it is, has been second to none. And I just want you to know how much I appreciate and on behalf of the Wusaket Education Department and really this community, how much we appreciate everything you've done. Mr. Seal was an original member of the appointed school committee for five years, Mrs. Gonzalez, three plus years, and Mr. Lima, a little over a year. And again, I, I don't think you'll ever truly know what you've meant to this district in the years that you've worked for this year. We would not have accomplished near what we've accomplished over the years without your leadership, your guidance, and your capacity. So I just on behalf of the Wusaket School, so I want to thank you for all you've done for us. And I would like to present each of you with a plaque. And the plaque reads, "The Wusaket Education Department takes great pleasure in presenting this award to Sir Seal. Thank you for your years of service and dedication to the Wusaket Education Department, November 21st, 2018." Mrs. Gonzalez.
Uh, we should do that now, yeah. Do you have a name? Yeah, I think so. The funeral's over. Are we done? Are we done? Well, I think the one tree Jenny likes to share the most and I hate people like saying good job.
Good job, son. Absolute job. Awesome.
Fantastic job.
You don't have the floor to watch here. Uh, yeah, I hope to have some snacks during the recognitions and announcements. No, no, they've all been out of shape if we do that. We can just go get the snacks.
Are you looking at me?
Yeah, she's looking at you. She wants to make sure you don't miss your soup.
Let's do it.
When we eat the soup, we're winning soup. Shall we continue?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next. Next, I would like to recognize and congratulate the school committee members elect, all of which are here this evening. I would like to recognize Ms. Piscus. Eleanor Nardado. Rebecca Capwell. Don Burke. And Paul Corche.
What was the second to last one? The second to last name, it says it was next, uh, Mr. Burke. Never heard of him.
I would just, I'd like to welcome the five of you to the school committee. I'm very excited. I think we're gonna do some, we're gonna continue to do some great things here at Wusaket for the children of this community. And I can't wait to start working with each and every one of you. So congratulations and welcome to the Wusaket Education Department.
Okay, Steve said he wants extra.
On Saturday, October 13th, members of the Wusaket High School Boys and Girls Cross Country Teams participated in the 30th Annual Shelter Walk in Wusaket, which raises money to help keep the whole Dempster and Lucian Benoit homeless shelters operating. Both teams have supported the annual shelter walk every year, and in the past, they've walked in memory of late George Nasuti, who encouraged all coaches and athletes to give back to the community. We are so proud of the community's spirit and dedication to others that our student athletes demonstrate. Congratulations to 10th grade student Peyton Cahill for being nominated as the new student ambassador for Wusaket High School. Peyton will serve on the Student Advisory Award for the Rhode Island International Assembly meeting. Congratulations to the Wusaket High School Football Team on its Super Bowl victory this past Sunday over East Greenwich High School by a score of 37 to 13. Emmanuel Gomes captured the annual Frank Murray MVP Award as he racked up a whopping 261 all-purpose yards. The Villanovans face Cumberland High School on Thanksgiving Day at 10:00 a.m. at Cumberland High School for their final game of the season. Good luck, Villanovans. Congratulations to students of Wusaket High School who won $500 in the SEDEXO Healthy High School Challenge. Wusaket High School finished 48 out of 181 high schools that participated in this year's challenge. High school programs manifest SEDEXO around the country who try to outperform each other by earning points for served balanced plate meals and healthy à la carte snacks and beverages. Congratulations to the Wusaket High School Debate Team on their successful first tournament at Brown University. Wusaket sent debaters to all three divisions at the tournament, including nine novice debaters debating for the first time. In the varsity division, Kyle Roberts took first place team with his partner from Blackstone Academy, while Alex Grayden and his partner from Central took third place varsity team. Alex also took second place speaker in the varsity division. Hillary Thilalong took first place speaker in her first varsity competition. The JV team with Eric Liu and Lauren Peliquin took first place team for their division. Azaria Rivera debated solo for most of her debates in the tournament, took third speaker in the junior varsity division, and received a sportsmanship award for her generous assistance to a team she faced which was unprepared. Congratulations to all debaters on their first tournament of the season. Build Our Kids' Success, or otherwise known as BOX, which is a physical activity program that empowers school communities to improve their children physically, mentally, and socially through the power of movement, is running for the fourth consecutive year in Wusaket. Backed by scientists, BOX provides each school community with robust curriculum, offers training and ongoing support to establish and maintain impactful programs, serving the whole child. The Wusaket Education Department just received notification that through a generous donation from the Reebok Foundation, BOX will continue to provide our schools with a grant in the amount of $10,500 for Fall 2008 BOX Session. Additionally, the Reebok Foundation on behalf of BOX will also provide an in-kind donation of program equipment, participant t-shirts, trainer shoes and shirts, and a few other miscellaneous incentives. This donation is valued at $6,209. We thank the Reebok Foundation and BOX for their kind and generous support as we look forward to another successful and healthy 2018, 2019 school year. And finally, I'd like to wish everyone in the Wusaket community a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. I'd like to take this opportunity also to wish all of our staff, administrators, and other personnel in the district a very healthy and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. So I just want to say congratulations again to the football team for doing us proud. And the BOX programs, I'm looking forward to the high school curriculum coming into alignment with the rest of the movement initiatives that we have in the district. So I guess I'll look at you to break that one forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Would any other school committee member wish to comment on the recognitions and announcements?
Mr. Chairman.
One second, actually. Because the chowder was served during the recognitions and announcements, I wanted to thank Chef Paul and the students that came for bringing it to us. So thank you very much. Yes?
You still have my thunder, Mr. Chairman, but I want to add my thanks to you, Valerie, to Steve, for your years here on the school committee. Not only were you excellent colleagues, but you've become my friends. So you'll be missed, I think. You said it'd be a roast, but no, I really want to thank you for everything you've done for me. You've helped me become a much better committee person, so many thanks. I also want to congratulate not just the football teams, they've done a fantastic job, but also the cross-country teams, the debate team, I think they've done a fantastic job as well. They've done us proud. And our district has always done fantastic as well, we're eager to do so. And like superintendent, I want to wish everyone, not only in this district, but in our city, a happy Thanksgiving, a healthy holiday, and that we all come back refreshed and ready to go and will have gotten all of the turkey coma that we will all endure in the next couple of days. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so some of that comes out of your good love, good times. Yes, Mrs. Gonzalez.
I also want to congratulate the football team. I was super, super excited for our win. And thank you, Chef Paul, for your, my daughter is in the culinary program and I told her to do whatever she needs to do to steal that chowder recipe. But you guys do a great, great job. Thank you. And we did, I want to say thank you to all the people who took their time to recognize this, and this has been really beautiful. But I don't think it's clear that only us who are here are seeing something today. So is it okay right now I can give Paul a little something? I can have a little something for Paul that I'm here to make, and this is especially meaningful for him. Paul, this is for you.
I second that.
I've done a few second names, right?
Yeah, anytime that's been right, anybody gets a second where you're just like, yes, we got a second. But thank you, it's been an honor working with all of you. But thank you, it's been an honor working with all of you. Thank you.
If you really have been there, you have the T-shirt now, so.
Yes, I do.
All right. Anyone else? Hearing none, I'll make the motion to receive and place and file the recognitions and announcements.
He didn't even try.
All in favor, signify my standing. Aye. Aye, opposed, aye. Habit on to the approval of minutes. I'll make the motion to approve the October 24th closed session minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Mr. Lima. I can't remember Lima, so it's ruining my flow. All right. Any corrections? Hearing none, Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bourget?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
When the closed session minutes are approved, I'll make a motion to approve the October 24th 2018 open session minutes. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Bourget. Any corrections? Hearing none, Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bourget?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
And the open session minutes are approved. Onto the consent agenda. I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second made by Ms. Gonzalez. This is the first time I ever prepared one for everybody. Took us to the very end to get there. All right. Would any school committee member wish to take out any items for individual discussion? Homeschooling?
Well, I did this last night. I'm a health class, how's that?
New committee members, you can look forward to the annual Paul Bourget homeschooling tutorial next August. All right. Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bourget?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And the consent agenda is approved. There are no communications on the school committee reports, securities, and facilities subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The security slash facilities committee met on October 25th at the feet. Chief Tom Hulz was present, and the focus of this meeting was to discuss the security measures at all our schools. The assessments, the safety assessments were being conducted, and the big item that we discussed, obviously, was the rear entrance to the high school, where the front entrance of both the high school and the career center are well-guarded, well-secured, but it's the back entrances. The entrances that lead from one building to another needs a lot of shore enough, and we're looking to get the final approvals so that we can put in temporary measures, whether it's a gate or whatever, to provide additional security for those entrances, and at some point, we'll have to entertain the idea of some kind of walkway between the two buildings. This way, the buildings will be much more secure. So that's an ongoing discussion. We also started talking about the five-year plan. We're pretty much done with that, the facilities plan, and we're using the JAPids report that was coming, that came out a couple of years ago now, and we're gonna be using that to identify projects for us to consider, you know, on a priority basis, which basically are the loops, any additional loops and windows that need to be taken care of. And again, most of those, a lot of those funds are coming from the state building authority, where we get quite a bit of what we pay reimbursement. So that's what the discussion took place. I want to add one thing that, I'm gonna say it, and we'll talk about it now. It came to my attention that the Vernon Elementary School side of the building that has electric heat had problems, and that came through from one of the parents. So Dr. McGee, myself, Ms. Natariyani, visited Vernon, and we identified some classrooms were too hot, some were so cold that last year, the teachers and the children were wearing coats. There was another classroom where if you turned on the heat, there's a lot of dust that came out, and really, that was a problem. And the rooms that were too hot, some of the screens were there, so the teachers were cleaning tables to provide some security. So all that's being worked on, Ms. Natariyani and her staff really gone on top of this. The electrical contractor has been brought in, or our electrical people have come in, they're working on this, the dust has been taken care of, the screens are being built so that both sides of the Vernon Elementary School spots heating and temperature control will be taken care of very shortly. The other side, which is basically oil heat, I think, boilers and all that good stuff, is fine. But this is where it's very important for parents, or teachers, if you hear something, get it to the school committee or to the administration, so we can, because some of these problems we didn't know. And these poor teachers and children were so used to operating in hot and cold, they just run along. But it got to a point where this had to be taken care of, and it's glad it came to our attention. We're very happy to go visit and get this going and clear up the facility. So, you know, kudos to the teachers, the students, and Ms. Natariyani and your staff. Excellent job. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Was there any discussion of the traffic study at the high school?
It was, we began to speak about it, but that's gonna be what that will be. But we need to take care of congestion, Cass Avenue, as you come in, if you travel Cass Avenue in the morning, you know, from seven to nine o'clock, it's very difficult, and it's the same in the afternoon, so somehow we're gonna have to find, maybe get a new road that's gonna go from Cass, it's maybe gonna go to El. As a potential, but that has to be studied, we haven't done that yet. We will focus totally on security and just talking a little bit about the traffic.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll make the motion to receive and place and file the security facilities subcommittee report. Is there a second? Second made by Ms. Lima, all in favor, signify my standing. Aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it. Conferences and discussions, none. Onto unfinished business. I'll make the motion for discussion approval on the prohibition of aiding and abetting policy for second passage. Is there a second? Second made by Vice Chair Bourget. Any discussion? Dr. McGee will call.
Chairman Seal?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bourget?
Yes.
Ms. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
And the policy is approved. My understanding is the only one hanging out there is the transgender candidate. No new business. So on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna start with the school safety committee update. I just wanted to update the committee that Mr. Natariyani and myself have been meeting with the Wunsaket Police and Wunsaket Fire Department with respect to the school safety checklist, those called in. As you know, that by statute, they only have to be completed every three years. We've made the decision here in Wunsaket to complete them every single year, so those are completed, and we're in the process of normalizing the report for each one of those for each one of our schools. And lastly, the emergency plans for each of our schools, we've been working on those as well, those are complete, and what we need to now do next is just to import the specific information from each school into each of those safety plans, and we'll be good to go with those as well. The second item is the career center project update, so I just wanted to let everyone know. Again, I've been going to the career center daily to meet with the project manager there. I'm happy to say that the work is going along very well in terms of the cleaning, the duct work has all been cleaned out, completely disinfected, the classrooms and the hallways and offices have also been cleaned. Right now, they are in the process of completing the grid ceilings. They probably, I would say, have about 80% of the entire building gritted. Once they've completed that, the shops are the last areas that are going to be, where the grid's gonna be installed. Once that's done, they're gonna come back through, and they'll actually place the tiles. We, myself and Mr. Natariyani, met with the fire department last week, and we discussed our plan, and we discussed reaching out to them when we are ready, which should be, I would guess about December 1st, to have the fire department come in and to make sure that everything is, you know, is meeting the fire code and standard. They indicated to us that if we put everything back where it was, albeit it's all very clean, they don't anticipate any problem with, you know, with that work, but nonetheless, we're gonna have them come out and give us their final okay. So we're projecting that the week of, the first week of December, the first crew will come back, which would be the automotive, the culinary, the digital media, and the construction shops will all return, as will the main office of the administrative section of the building. By the time we return from Christmas break, they believe that remaining programs, staff, and students will return to the school. So it's, it never, it always takes a little longer than they say it's gonna take, and this has taken a little bit longer. However, that's what I see so far with the work that has been done, and I'm very impressed with the communication we've had between the companies and myself and Mr. Natariyani. So I'm excited to have them come back soon, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGee. Would any school committee member wish to comment on the superintendent's report? Hearing none, I'll make the motion to receive and place and file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second made by Vice Chair Bourget, Ms. Lima, all in favor, signify my standing. Aye. Aye, opposed, the ayes have it, school committee good welfare. Vice Chair Bourget.
I have one item, Mr. Chairman. I would say most of us know, and it's been on the school website, the district website, it's been on Facebook, that the Levitt Foundation has the Levitt Amp Concert Series each year, they award a $15,000 grant to communities that show the interest and the wherewithal to do this, and they ask members of the community to vote for your particular city, and there were 41 entrants to this, or contest, if you would, and as of today, we know we're in the top 25, but it appears from other folks that have been following this, we're within the top 10. So there's a good chance that we will get this concert series again next summer, and it's a series of 10 free concerts that are held at Rhode Island 9:00. It's a great time, it's a great time to meet your folks, you know, there's food and drink, and it's just a wonderful way to spend a Friday evening with friends and family in the city of Wunsaket, so let's keep our fingers crossed.
Thank you, Vice Chair Bourget. Ms. Gonzalez.
I believe the time to go is yesterday.
It's done.
It's done.
It was yesterday, the 20th, at 4:00 o'clock, so you missed that anyway.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Mayor Lisa Valdell, who was appointed to the school committee. I probably would have never thought about serving until she approached me, so I, my time here has been absolutely a pleasure. I remember when I was first appointed, I began to receive a lot of phone calls, you know, people with the best intentions trying to tell me how to navigate the troubled waters of school committee, especially when you're dealing with so many different people. They wanted to prepare me for the ruthless politics that are involved, and I quickly made up my mind that I was not going to be led by other people's experiences or the communication that they've had in the past with everyone that was serving, that I was going to just come in with an open mind and assess everybody through my own experience. I would do my best to listen, to be fair, and have a non-biased conclusion without compromising my values or respect for all the people involved. What I immediately found was that this board was composed of people that share those same values. Everyone was honorable and had integrity and was friendly, even Mr. Jeff Crichton, who they, you know, they were saying, oh, it's always the school committee against the union, but you have approached us on everything with respect and with honor, and it's just been an absolute pleasure, you know, to serve here. Now, I want to congratulate the new board that is coming in, and it's the first elected board in a very long time, so the people have spoken, and I was your turn to speak for the people. And I hope that in your service here, you're applying the wisdom to bridge the gaps that still remain. I'm very proud of a lot of the work that we were able to accomplish. I think sometimes we could have accomplished more if we had taken the time to put aside some of our own personal agendas. You know, we just finished elections, and election season, you know, your toes get stepped on a little bit, people have, but the election is over, now the people that have been elected are the leaders of our city, and those who feel that they might have not guided people, they wanted us to put our emotions aside, and let's work together for the better of our city, that the school committee, that the mayor, that the city council, that we will all be able to put all of these negative emotions aside and just work together to, for this beautiful community. And just in case you don't know it, this is the new school committee, just in case you know it, I need to say it, the Wunsaket School Department has a dream team. Dr. McGee, Jen Chanka, Ken, Brad, Al, they are a dream. They're a dream to work with, and they are absolute professionals and the top of their class, and everybody that has come to call, I know you're gonna continue to mark a really good legacy, you know, in this school committee, and I just, again, I want to say that I'm very, very proud of the work they did, and I'm very happy to have served, and I will miss you guys, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Mr. Weibo.
I'd really like to at least thank the mayor for appointing me, because again, like Ms. Gonzalez said, I probably never ran for this position, but I did. It's been an honor and a privilege to work for the district, to work with me and all his staff and all members of the committee, like Paul Sareli. I kind of feel like we became more like friends, like we get along, you know, when we disagree on things, we walk out laughing and say, hey, we can move on to the next subject. So it's been, it's been a real privilege of mine, anyway, so it's been a great honor, I guess, you know. But other than that, I'm not along with it, I don't have long stories to go with things. I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Congratulations to all the elected members, absolutely. As anyone knows who runs for an office, it takes a little bit of Thanksgiving to run sometimes, you gotta make sure that, you know, that, so. Anyway, congratulations, and all, as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Weibo. So I want to congratulate the incoming elected board of Paul Bourget, Don Burke, Lynn Gaviscus, Eleanor Nardado, and Rebecca Capwell. I am pleased to see that there are three seasoned members of the school committee that are coming on, because I think it's important to have experience. When I was first appointed with Dan Chapman, George Macator, Jose Rivera, and Susan Paulina, we had no one to help us go forward. It was like the Wild West. Dr. McGee remembers those times. We went through, I think, like four superintendents in like, I don't know, seven months. And I think bringing new faces to the committee is And I think bringing new faces to the committee is important as well, right? I think it's always important to bring new ideas and new perspectives to the committee. So I think I'm very happy and proud of the mix of people that were elected, and I'm very confident that they're going to do a fantastic job. So Donald Burke and I share an interesting distinction, but they're almost opposites. Donald Burke is the only school committee member to serve on the appointed committee, but wasn't an original member and wasn't the final member. And he served an entire term, wire to wire, without being one of the first or the last. And I'm the only person to serve from the beginning to the end. When we served together, I found his judgment and perspective coming from Boston or whatever. I can't even do the accent, I'm sorry. To be, to be very important and enlightening in a lot of our discussions. He is the only one on the committee who ever had any teaching experience of any of the appointed members throughout its entire duration. I really enjoyed the time we had. I do think you were robbed by not getting a plaque because, yeah. Because, you know, it's, you did a great job. I found some of the work that I've done here to be some of those most meaningful. I have enjoyed the fact that politics, for the most part, have not played a part. And when they have played a part, they've played a part for me. I think it took Mr. Lima, I don't know, three or four years to finally get appointed, once nominated by the mayor. So, but that's politics outside our control, right? Then, once seated, the politics won, and we all were able to, you know, discuss issues and disagree and move forward respectfully. Two people have really influenced my time on this board. George Macatur was one of them. You know, he was the original chair. And I called him a lot when I became chair, saying, what do I do now? And he'd say, Soren, I'm in Florida, stop calling. He didn't really. And then the other person is Paul Borche, who I think I talk to more than my wife. I think there's some days that I spend more time on the phone than teenage schoolgirl, although I don't want people talking on the phone anymore, but they used to anyways. The last time we talked on the phone, his wife grabbed the phone and said, Soren, I went grocery shopping, came home, put everything in the wagon, and you're still on the phone with Ma. So I'm going to look forward to not talking to you anymore. And then, Dr. McGee, I've really enjoyed working with you. You've endured a lot of turbulence, even in the five years that I have been around. I guess you were appointed to the curriculum director almost just before the school committee became appointed. But to go from middle school principal to curriculum director to sort of interim superintendent, to interim superintendent, to maybe super interim superintendent, to assistant superintendent, to finally superintendent. And having to go through those, the leadership turmoil that you've had, while solidifying a solid administrative team, I think is very impressive. You are the only, well, I think you and Dr. Salzen are the only two directors that were here when the board started, right? And everyone else is new, right? This is a new leadership team. And so we had so many vacancies in the beginning. I think you've done a wonderful job bringing a good team together. As Ms. Gonzalez said, you have a dream team. And so, keep up. So I just wanted to say thank you for the time that I've gotten to serve. It was an absolute honor. I've enjoyed it very much. And then, before I pass the gavel to Dr. McGee for safekeeping until sometime in December, I will entertain the motion to adjourn at 7:58. Motion made by Vice Chair Borche, second by Mr. Lima. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. The ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.